Everybody, and then you need to. Just waiting for it to hit six. I'm waiting for my clock to hit six. All right, I've got six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I have a motion to approve and accept this agenda with an amendment to item 7D, personnel report as recommended.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, team, before we get rolling, I'm gonna direct you to our guiding principles, that blue document that's sitting on the table in front of you. Knowing kind of our big-ticket items are to talk about student safety, data sources to support our goal, and legislative priorities, I just want you to read through it and think about what norms are most important for you to focus on this evening. Okay, we're gonna move on to acknowledgements and recognitions. It is August, so we want to take a moment to welcome all new teachers joining our district this year, who kicked off the year today with their first day of new teacher pre-service. On behalf of the board, we want to warmly welcome you as you begin your teaching journey here in Ankeny, and we look forward to the impact you'll make in supporting our students' families and our community. Jody, what's a ballpark of how many new teachers we have? Seventy-five new staff. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, on behalf of the board, I would like to invite Keith Wendell, is it Wendell or Wendell?
Wendell.
Wendell. To step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern, please begin by stating your name. Thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes, so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. This board meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting, which includes your comments, will be maintained on YouTube for five years. Thank you for your support of our school district. You got three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. My name is Keith Wendell. Aaron McElroy and I work with Access Systems, and our company works with three of the five largest school districts in the state, Waukees Schools, Des Moines Schools, Sioux City Schools, and we eventually wanna work with your school at some point.
Or you're not in the market right now, you're not even looking, but Aaron and I have the philosophy, we wanna learn about your district before we start telling you about us. And so we, since it's open to the public, we wanted to come to a meeting and see what it's like, and be able to learn more about your school district. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, I would like to invite Elizabeth Sloan to the microphone.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I'm trying to get the other members to come up with me, but they won't.
I'll come.
We are with a community group called Public School Strong, and we've met with most of you. I think we have one more school board member to meet with and do one-on-ones, but we just are here to be your cheerleaders and cheerleader for our students in the school district. We want to eventually bring a resolution that we hope that you'll take a vote on. And tonight, you're gonna be talking about legislative priorities and your school goals. And when you read through those documents, and when I read through them, it matches exactly what our resolution says about fully funding public schools. And, you know, it's all about taking a look at students and who they are, acknowledging the differences of our students, and setting goals around them. And so I hope that you will, when we bring this resolution to you after we get signatures from our community, that you will take a stand by taking a statement and voting on this, so that our governor and our legislators know that you really believe that we should have fully funded public schools, and we're here to support that for you. And we're here to be cheerleaders in the community, and we know that our public wants fully funded public schools as well. So, we just wanted to bring ourselves to you today and say who we are, and thank you for your involvement with us. And we encourage all of you to reach out if you have questions or you have concerns. We wanna be really strong advocates for you this school year as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about the items here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's move on to information only. Item A, the safety update.
John is...
Didn't make him stand out the hallway, did he?
No.
Okay.
So I think everyone knows John, he's gonna be going over our annual safety update for... I think everyone knows John, he's gonna be going over our annual safety update for our school district, and then in our closed session today, the directors will get a more detailed overview of our safety plan for this upcoming school year. John?
Doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Just kinda wanted to bring you all back up to speed on what we've been doing with the safety and security work in the school district, highlight a couple things, like the Governor's School Safety Grant that we were awarded a couple of years ago, where we're at in the projects that that's funding, and a couple of other just general updates to the safety and security landscape for the next upcoming school year. So, as a reminder, the Governor's School Safety Grant came about, I believe it was in 2023, the state paid for us to have vulnerability assessments of all of our schools. Out of that vulnerability assessment, they helped us identify opportunities for improvement in physical security items, think gates, locks, cameras, those kinds of things. So we were awarded about $849,000 and change in that grant. There were a few things that were a little odd with that grant, or a little challenging for us to work through. Projects that we wanted to spend the money on had to be identified in those vulnerability assessments, so if they didn't include, I don't know, lights, we'll say, we couldn't use that money to go after lights. Another kind of challenging thing to that was, the grant was specific to a building and was capped at $50,000. So, as an example, a brand-new building like Heritage, Abbey Grove wasn't even, we hadn't broke ground yet, so that wasn't even eligible. So Heritage, our next newest building, certainly when it was built, had a lot more of the safety and security features put into it, so did we spend the whole $50,000 in that building? No. But we weren't able to move that to a different building that maybe had higher needs. So, you can see there, the unspent portion, that's $342,000 and change. I intend by December, when we close out the grant, that we're not gonna leave very much money on the table. I'm gonna find a way to spend all of that, obviously, to improve safety and security in our schools. Part of that grant also was a GeoCom critical incident mapping software. So, a company called GeoCom came in, they mapped all of our buildings, the state paid for that, and they looked at things like, where are utilities, where are emergency exits, where do we shelter kids in severe weather, that kind of thing, and then provided that map in electronic format to the 911 center, to police, fire, EMS. So when they respond to our schools, even if they're not necessarily 100% familiar with layout of the building, they can still know where the critical nodes are. The grant also paid for a school safety radio in each of our buildings that is a direct two-way radio communication to 911 dispatch. So with one button push, they're immediately talking to a dispatcher without having to pick up a phone and dial 911. So we've got that installed in all of our schools, and then access to Safe+Sound Iowa, Safe &amp; Sound Iowa. So if you're familiar with our current TIPS system, anonymous reporting tool, we've had for a long time in the district, a lot of schools across the state of Iowa didn't have that kind of a system, and so the state purchased that, Safe &amp; Sound Iowa. We'll talk about that in a little bit. It hasn't received near as many submissions as our TIPS report system, which I would expect people are familiar with TIPS and kinda used to that. Some of the projects we were able to go after with the grant money, camera upgrades, so changing out old cameras, cameras that maybe don't look as good, and then also increasing camera coverage, some of our buildings that meant like external cameras to cover playgrounds and that kind of stuff. So that's where we used some of that money. Also, bidirectional amplifiers, BDAs, to improve radio coverage inside the building. So there is a requirement in building code that buildings over a certain size, police, fire, and EMS radios need to work inside those buildings. That makes sense to me. I want that to happen in our schools. So, we were able to use some of that money to become in compliance with that building code, but I also was able to leverage, hey, can we use that same piece of equipment to improve the radio coverage of the school district's radios at the same time? And we were able to do that in a lot of cases by just replacing head-end unit, didn't have to replace antennas, that kind of stuff in the building. So, brought us into compliance with fire code and made our system better while we were at it. And then, also included in that is some target-hardening security improvements that I'd be glad to talk to you about in closed session, but obviously, I don't want a potential adversary to use that information, exploit it against us. So, we'll just leave that generally, some other target-hardening things that we were able to do.
John, can I ask you a question before you get off that slide?
Please.
Will you just speak to that high-speed wireless broadband network? Like, what does that mean exactly?
Yeah, so, I can't remember how many years ago it was, they carved out, the government carved out a section called BAN 14, a public safety high-speed internet, to allow police officers, firefighters, their mobile data computers to work, right? That also, now, a lot of their public safety radios have a built-in cell card to it. So if they're outside of their normal coverage area with antennas and that sort of stuff, their radios switch over to a cell card, and they can still talk regular radios, but the infrastructure's all over cellular. So, we were able to, these bidirectional amplifiers amplify our MotoTurbo system that we use in the school district, their public safety radios, and that BAN 14, public safety piece of broadband network.
Thank you.
Did that kinda help, without getting too geeky on you? Sorry, I'm a radio guy at heart and communications guy, so I can kinda go down that rabbit hole pretty easy. We were also approached by Public Health. Recently, one of their healthcare coalitions provided us public access bleeding control kits. So if you go around in our buildings now, you'll see an automatic external defibrillator, the AED, and right next to that is a cabinet that has hemorrhagic bleeding control. So if you have a bad cut, chop class, you know, those kinds of things, there are eight kits inside that with bleeding control supplies. So we've installed those in all schools and athletic fields. We provided training, actually, a trainer training, I hate that, it's too many trains, instruction to school nurses and the school safety team, so we can provide that training, excuse me, to anybody else, custodians, teachers, whoever else may want that training in the building. Interesting thing about that, we installed it, and within three days, had our first use of the kit on a student that injured himself while lifting weights, and somebody went right over to the cabinet, opened it up, pulled out some gauze and some other things in there, some gloves, and we were able to treat that student and their injuries. They would've had to wait for a nurse and, you know, EMS to get there. We were able to treat that student right away. So, a win within the first week. We've had some changes recently to the safety and security team. Officer Cory Miller's still at Ankeny High School. We have a new school resource officer at Centennial High School. His name's Rex Shoemaker. If you remember Jake, he decided to go back to patrol and explore some other opportunities in his career, so thanks to Jake, I know he will be significantly missed at Centennial by everyone. Definitely, he was a large presence there, both physically and in the impacts that he had on students and staff there. Thanks to you all and the city, we were able to add a school resource officer for this upcoming school year at Northview Middle School. Madison Dix will be starting there at the start of the school year, and then Southview, John Subai, will return as he was in the second semester of last year. With those new additional moves, I guess, of school resource officers, we're gonna be able to change some of the safety coordinators. So if you remember Riley Blaylock and Aaron Kohlsdorf, we split the school district north and south currently. We'll be able to move them out of Northview and Southview, because they'll have a dedicated police officer there. We've already moved Aaron to Parkview, and the intent is, when Madison comes on, Riley Blaylock's position, we'll move to Prairie Ridge Middle School. Why do I say Riley Blaylock's position? Because he just accepted a job with the Ankeny Fire Department as a firefighter paramedic. So we will be posting for that position soon. We wish Riley well and a safe career with the fire department, and I'm sure we'll see him around often. With the addition of the school resource officers, we no longer have contracted security in our buildings. If you remember, previously, we had Verigard, who did a fantastic job for us on fairly short notice at Northview and Southview. When we added those two SRO positions, we've moved away from that contract. So, definitely, we thank Verigard for their support. I think they did a great job, made some great connections with the kids, helped us through a time when we needed some additional security. But with that addition of the SROs, we won't need them. And then, as always, we're continuing, as in years past, I should say, Contemporary Services Corporation, CSC, is going to continue our crowd management, our event management, if you will, for activities. You'll see them, usually it's football games, the yellow shirts on, you're probably familiar with them from concerts and other events that you see around the metro. So they're continuing to provide us crowd management services for the next school year. So, what does the safety and security team been up to? That's a long list. I always joke that the summer is when we do inspections of everything, and then the city comes in and inspects us to make sure that we inspected all the things that we need to do inspect. So fire alarms, fire sprinklers, the fire suppression hoods in kitchens, fire hydrants, fire extinguishers, I'm not gonna read off the list there, it's in front of you there. They also assisted the fire marshal coming through and doing their annual inspection. We've got some work orders that are still outstanding, that we need to finish up some things, but I don't see any reason that we won't be ready to go for the start of school year. We tested all of our security systems, cameras, lockdown buttons, doors, card readers, locks, radios, phones, all of that kind of stuff over the summer. We did the annual update to the Emergency Ready Reference, which we'll talk about later. We've done some training with our staff in the reunification plan, and done some coordination with Heartland AEA. They have a rapid reunification team to provide additional support to us if we have to do a parent-student reunification. So we've done some synchronization to make sure our plan's the same as their plan, so it's a little more seamless if they do ever have to come here and support us in that. And then we hosted the active threat response training, put on by the Ankeny Police Department and the CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team. So that was two weeks long at Southview, approximately 300 police officers from the metro, over that two weeks, went in and did active threat response training in our building. Loved to host that, because now they're familiar with our building, and a lot more comfortable in there, and they love having someplace local and close that they can work in. So what does the safety and security team do on a day-to-day basis? Well, I went back and looked at some statistics of how many things that they respond to, how many things they're handling day-to-day. So Aaron and Riley, very busy in that they go to every fire drill, every tornado drill, every lockdown drill, every bus evacuation drill, so 346 drills between the two of them last year that they participate in, evaluate, provide feedback, and those kind of things. And then, as if they weren't busy enough, there was also 475 documented responses to support buildings, and you can kinda see the breakdown there. That could be anything from a student that elopes, runs out of the building, could be something that doesn't even involve us, just happening nearby. We had that at Prairie Trail last week, a nearby police incident caused a building to go into sheltering place, didn't affect us, wasn't part of us, wasn't targeted at us, but it was something nearby. We wanted to make sure students and staff were safe there with the before-and-after-school program. So that kinda gives you an idea of how busy they are and the breakdown. I think the thing to glean out of this, definitely the number of responses at high schools and middle schools supports our idea of adding school resource officers at those locations. I threw in a little data analysis, but I kinda have to do a disclaimer before we get into that, so you understand what we're looking at. So what I'm about to show you is gonna be a breakdown of TIPS reports and the Safe &amp; Sound Iowa reports that we got over the last school year. The important thing, as you look at that data, is please remember, the category, what it says that somebody is reporting, doesn't necessarily mean that's what the outcome was, right? It's just what they selected from the dropdown. Please remember, not all reports are founded. We may investigate and find out the entire thing is nonsense. Prairie Trail, last Friday, or Thursday, whatever it was, that was a completely bogus call to the police department about an incident. The entire thing was fabricated. So it doesn't mean that that's what you're gonna have as the outcome. We often get multiple reports on the same incident, so when you see a number, that may be three people reported the same incident, or more. And then also, because of the statewide nature, and TIPS is open to anybody that goes to our website, sometimes it's not even anything to do with the Ankeny School District. They could be a student that wants to report something at Southeast Polk, for example, but they don't know how to do that, so they're an Ankeny student, or they have a connection to Ankeny, they use our TIPS, and then we pass that information on. So please keep those four bullet points in mind as we kinda look at this stuff. On the left is the TIPS report, so that's our system that we've had, again, in Ankeny for a long time. Received 125 reports. You can kinda see the breakdown there of bullying, reports of drug and alcohol use, other, that literally could be anything from, I didn't get picked for the fill-in-the-blank activity, and I think I should have, I didn't get an A, and I should have, other things that, other crimes that aren't otherwise listed there, those kinds of things. Eleven self-harm, suicide risk threats, usually we get multiple of those, it's not just one lots of people are reporting. So we see 11, doesn't necessarily mean that was 11 individual students, lots of people tend to report those things. On the right, you can see the two reports that we got from the Safe &amp; Sound Iowa system. Again, that's the ones the state provides statewide to schools. One was a request to add some stoplights around Centennial. We don't have anything to do with that, that's a city, so we sent that over to the city traffic engineer. And one that was classified a threat to harm. There was a time period right at the beginning of the school year where there was a lot of social media stuff going on, and it was really vague, and it was going on all over the United States, and they were just throwing out school names. So, any place that had a heritage or a Prairie something, we would get the notice of like, hey, there may be something going on. So that's what that one was specifically.
John, who gets the tips? Does it come through email, or how is that?
Yeah, so it's on a, we receive an email notification to log in, excuse me, to a piece of software called Awareness. Each building defines who they want that to go to, so usually it's the principal, the APs, maybe a counselor, the social worker sometimes in the building, definitely the school resource officer, if it's a building that has a school resource officer. Darren, I think you get them, I do. So, the idea there is it goes out to enough people, somebody's going to see that, and somebody can take ownership, and in that, you can actually say, you can click a button and say, no, I'm the one that's investigating that, or I'm handling that, or you can assign it to a team if myself and Darren need to work on something. We can make that determination in there, and then everybody else can see that it's being handled, so multiple people aren't working it, and then there's a place where you can put your investigative notes and that kind of stuff, and determine what the outcome is.
Okay.
And that can be...
Go ahead.
Yes, that's for both systems, yeah.
And that can be completely anonymous if the user so chooses.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and it is, it's anonymous. We have no way of being able to track that back, even if we wanted to, which I don't know why we would. We'd accept that as an anonymous report. But yes, they can choose to be anonymous, or they can choose to self-identify if they want somebody to follow up and give them a resolution or ask more questions.
I have one other question. I see the tips on this website, where do they go to Safe &amp; Sound? Is that on our website too, or how do they get to Safe &amp; Sound?
I don't... I'm gonna have to check with Communications. I don't know if we have a link to Safe &amp; Sound on our website.
I just see tips.
Yeah, when we first, when Safe &amp; Sound first came out, we had a conversation about what would be better for us to do, to do just a complete changeover, to do both, or to stick with TIPS. Because at the time of the rollout, we had a better infrastructure of what John just described, as far as teams at each school and how quickly that would be, we decided to stick with TIPS for sure, and we did not wanna confuse people in that moment of emergency of which system do I choose? So we've, I'm sorry, we've chosen to keep TIPS as prominent on there. Safe &amp; Sound is advertised all over. It is, I believe, on the back of our ID cards along with TIPS, and it's certainly on the state website.
Cool, thank you.
Safe &amp; Sound definitely has a leaning towards you're reporting a threat to a school. You know of the next shooter, you know of the next act of violence. Where TIPS, we'll take that, but you can see the other categories there that will allow people to report on. So, definitely Safe &amp; Sound focused on keeping our schools safe from an act of violence, we'll take the, you know, the, somebody has a vape, we'll take the drinking, we'll take theft, vandalism, all of those kind of reports too on TIPS. So that's why there's a little bit of difference between the two systems.
And I just wanna say, I know you know this, but TIPS is something that students can access.
Absolutely.
Parents can access.
A member of the public.
Public can access. It's not just for students.
Correct.
Anybody sees anything, they can report anything.
Yes.
So, just sharing that.
Yep, that is absolutely correct. One of the more interesting stories from that, I'll give you a quick story, is a couple years ago, Parkview received a report about an incident at the bus transfer in the afternoon, and as we started to investigate that, seemed pretty serious, but I couldn't make a connection to any of the student names, and I couldn't make a connection to any of the staff names, and we were able to find out that it was actually a Parkview Middle School in like California or something like that, that they just typed Parkview Middle School, somehow landed on our page, there's a reported concern, and they did, but the interesting thing was, everything matched up Parkview. But the interesting thing was, everything matched up, Parkview, the PM, bus, transfer, all of these other things. So, it's pretty easy for the public to be able to find that just by hitting any of, it's on the bottom of all of our webpages, so.
I have a quick question.
Please.
And I don't, I don't think you touched on this and I just want to, when they do the tips line or what have you, how quick is the turnaround usually for someone to kind of see that and react to it if it's severe enough?
Crazy fast. I see stuff when I come in in the morning that our administrators apparently don't sleep, that somebody has found at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning and has started doing stuff on. So, there are times when I come in at 8:00 and it's already been investigated and either closed out or unfounded or some further investigation needs to happen and that's already happened by the time I get in at 8:00 AM.
I think that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
This question for Communications, she's not here.
Darren, Darren, will you do the notes, please?
So, there's a lot of great information on that first slide. How are we communicating that out to our public? Just, because sometimes we get a lot of people thinking we're not doing anything when these, you know, one-offs happen and it gets out on social media and whatnot. So, how are we communicating all the stuff you've done with this grant to the public? So, they know that we are reinforcing the safety in our buildings.
Yeah, we've talked to Communications, I think they've done a couple of newsletter articles about that, Going Home to Parents. I know there was some social media stuff over the summer about the inspections and work that's being done in our buildings. And we've talked about even some videos, again, trying to find that sweet spot of telling people that we, what we're doing, but not with enough detail that could be exploited against us.
Are you going to do a podcast?
We could do another one.
You should.
We had fun with that, Mr. Pruitt, didn't we?
There's also a safety and security section on the website that actually has some good information with some like updated practices and stuff, but kind of have to go look for it.
Right.
To find it.
That's the part, yeah.
Well, we appreciate the communication that's gone into this far.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from directors?
No, I appreciate you.
Yes.
And the work that you guys do and...
And the city for our additional SROs.
Yes.
Important addition to the team.
All right, we'll see you shortly.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Item B, the district data discussion. Dr. Pruitt, I think you're going to kick this off.
Yeah, it's me, we're going to get switched over first.
Sure.
So, we have been having a lot of discussions since this, since last year around what data I and my team present to the school board throughout the entire school year. Most recently, the board had a retreat where we got even more specific with regards to what the board is looking for that allows them to make decisions at the board table. And so, I'll talk about the purpose of sharing this information, I'll talk about leading and lagging data. I think it's, these are terms that are used in the business world in addition to in education. I'll specifically speak about leading data that we'll be looking at with the board this year. Not only at, during school board meetings, but also in the update that I'll be sharing throughout the school year and then next steps. Next steps is really, I have some guiding questions that I think Director Clays is going to lead us through. And so, the purpose, establishing a consistent and transparent process for, is really refining our consistent and transparent process of reviewing data that's aligned to our strategic plan that allows the board to make decisions that drive continuous improvement in our district. I think that's our bottom line, you know, how do we get better based off the recommendations that I and my team make to the school board? And then the board then votes on the direction that we're wanting to take the school district in order to improve not only outcomes for our staff, but more importantly, outcomes for our students. And so, leading and lagging data. And so, in education, you know, leading data are those indicators that allow us to be proactive during the course of the school year. And make changes to strategy, not only at the district office, but then also in our schools, in the classrooms, across the different programs that we have in our schools. And so, examples of some leading data that we should be able to use, attendance rates, grades and course subjects, formative assessments. And formative assessments are those assessments that a grade level, a grade level may give or a content team may give during the course of a, of a school year. So, an example might be a unit exam that's given. If everyone gives the exact same assessment, they can disaggregate that data to make decisions around how effective we were at teaching the content, what support students need, what training staff may need in order to do that more effectively moving forward. And then student engagement levels. We've talked about that a little bit towards the end of last year around how we more effectively engage our students throughout the school year. Lagging data are those indicators that provide like a historical measure of student progress. And so, an example, some examples of lagging data would be our graduation rates. We don't know those until our kids graduate. Standardized test scores, so ISS, college enrollment rates, those are, we don't get that data until after the kids enroll and then complete a semester in school, post-graduation employment rate. And so, with that, it's if our kids that, whose post-secondary plan doesn't include college or university, how many of our kids are going straight into the workforce, going to the military or enrolling in skilled trades? And so, that's a way to gauge, you know, are we effectively identifying, helping kids identify their post-secondary plans? And it might also be an indicator around how we might be more effective around our counseling supports from middle school through high school. So, some examples, so the next three slides are the leading indicators for each pillar. So, we'll do each pillar one at a time. And I'm specifically focused in on literacy and math, you know, there are other courses, but I think that these are core areas that support all of our other content areas. And again, as a reminder, our goal in our district is to get to 90% of our students proficient in reading and in math. We're currently at 85% for literacy and 82% in math. And so, the indicators that I'll be looking at with my team around literacy are FAST, our kindergarten through second grade, early literacy, third through fifth grade literacy. Also, sixth through 12th grade grades. We've not done that since I've been here and so, we're going to dive into looking at what grades look like at the six, 12 and 18-week mark in each semester. One that allows us to, there are a few things that we can look at, at each mark of the semester. And so, when we get to the six-week mark, no matter what the grades are, we can look at, you know, how many assignments have been submitted for grades? The type of tasks that are being, that we're asking kids to complete, how we're giving children feedback over the course of the semester. And the principal and their team are able then to provide additional support for our staff in our schools. Sixth through eighth grade amplify literacy unit assessments. Again, those will be those formative assessments that allow the principal and their teams to make endgame decisions throughout the entire school year. For math, similar to literacy, we're going to be looking at FAST more intently, K through eighth, kindergarten through eighth grade, high leverage assessments. Again, this is going to be a common assessment. And then again, grades in sixth through 12th grade at the six, 12 and 18-week mark. In pillar two, we, we rolled out Culture Amp last year. We're going to dig a little bit deeper this year. Last year, it was focused on me and the district office around how we'll, how we are supporting and improving culture in our, in our school district, in our organization. Going into the second year, not only will, I have an action plan, principals will be using that data to integrate into their building improvement plans to, again, improve culture in our organization. And we all understand that culture just isn't one person, it's all of us working together towards the culture that we want. And so, we'll be looking at participation rate for this upcoming administration of Culture Amp in the fall, the district and school action plans, the office hours. Last year, I did office hours in all of the schools. This year, I did two, two one-hour office hour sessions in all 18 schools, including some in beyond. We'll be doing, I'll be doing the exact same thing this year, except that it'll be over the course of a year, not one semester. And so, I'll be back in schools, listening to the feedback from, from staff. We'll also be looking at our MRA staff data, pre-K through ninth grade and then exit surveys from our staff.
Remind, what's the MRA again?
I'm going to have our local expert, Dr. Dittmar, talk about MRA staff data.
MRA stands for the Measurable Results Assessment.
So, it's a perception survey that's given at the end of each year to student, staff and families to give feedback on implementation of LEADERME.
So, on pillar three, supportive environment. And then supportive environments are a portion of what John Davis talked about, but it's also about, it's also about how we are interacting with our families, but more importantly, how we're interacting with our students throughout the entire school year. And so, we'll be digging into our MRA student data, MRA staff data, similar to what we did last summer. And John showed you a summary of some of this data. We looked at our behavior data, so major office referrals, minor office referrals, tips reporting in addition to emergency events. And as John indicated, not everything, the numbers, we have to disaggregate the data a little bit deeper with regards to really understanding, you know, when we're looking at behavior, where that behavior is occurring, what time of day, how we're responding and how we're supporting that student to reintegrate them back into the classroom. And so, and again, similar to our discussions over the past year, I think this is just the tip of the iceberg with regards to the leading data that we can look at. We can pour data, you know, throw data at you, but based off of our discussions, the way I understood it, the board wanted a clearer focus throughout the entire school year and some regularity around what we're looking at to drive the discussions at the board table and the individual discussions with me in our individual check-ins. And so, I, I didn't ask the board president or the vice president for questions that they may want after the session, I came up with them myself, but I'll turn it over to Director Clays.
Yeah, so before we get into questions, I just want to allow for any clarifying questions for Director Pruitt around those data sources before we move into, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page and understanding what he was talking about with that data before we move into this conversation. So, I'd open the floor to any questions, anybody has?
I just have a quick question on the frequency of Culture Amp. Is that just once a year right now? Is there the thought to do that more often or is it going to be a standard kind of annual check-in?
We did it one time last year, this was our first time doing it, we're doing this fall. We haven't decided if we're going to do a book-in at the end of this year. I think that once we look at our participation rate and the data, we'll make a decision relatively soon whether or not we do it at the end of the school year.
But the plan is to do it at the same time this year, is it October?
Yes.
Okay.
What was that, do you know what the purchase, purchase?
Participation rate was this last year.
Yes, thank you.
Jody, do you remember off the top of your head?
I don't off the top of my head.
But I know we were extremely high and in fact, that was one of the, our biggest strengths is that participation.
How long does it take a teacher to fill out one of those surveys?
It's supposed to be less than 15 minutes.
Okay.
So, it wasn't just teachers, it was the entire district.
Yeah, okay.
That took it.
Yeah.
Other clarifying questions related to data sources? Okay, so, as we step into the questions that Dr. Pruitt has provided for us, I just want to remind the seven of us of what our specific board goal is and our, and that can be found at the top of our Guiding Principles and Norms document. And that, and that is that we want to consume more targeted data that's aligned with our district priorities and that strategic plan. So, we are taking, this is the like, what does it mean for us, right? Taking greater ownership of this data and advocating in our community with this data as the ability to tell a story about who we are. So, this is an important conversation for us to be having. So, as Dr. Pruitt indicated at the beginning, I think if I heard correctly, we'll see the majority of this data. It will just either come at the board table or some of it will come in our Friday updates. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, any questions about that? Okay, so, I think that the first question asks us, how do we think that looking at this leading data, which is influenceable and predictable, how is that better for us to consume in terms of strategic decision-making? I'm assuming as opposed to like the lagging data, like waiting until we get graduation rates or waiting until we get ISS data? Like, how do we see this benefiting us in our strategic planning?
Okay, did the PowerPoint get changed? Okay.
Yeah, it's cracked up there.
It was a correction. Yes, I had the wrong word.
Yes, yes, yes.
I stayed up all night answering it, lagging.
You'd be a good one to respond to tips data then. Yeah, so, thinking about the data that he's shared here, which, which we obviously be able to look at much more frequently, how does this help us in our decision-making? And I think with our goal, thinking about storytelling and owning data.
I think it's just more frequent, right? Like, it's more frequent check-ins throughout the school year. Some of the lagging data, it's good to use and we need to keep an eye on it, but it's kind of after the fact, right? And so, the leading indicators, I think, give us an opportunity to course correct and ask questions to get us back on track so that we can improve the lagging data results.
I think it'll help us determine like what medicine I think about we need to assess. I think it'll help us look at trends, right? Like, is there a certain trend at a particular score, school or something and what might we dig into that more? So, it's going to help us really isolate in.
I want to say that I think that it gives us the facts that we can help drive our decisions instead of the feel of what, you know, so we have... Yeah, the perception versus what's, what the numbers say, what the facts say. And so, we're not driven just by heart, but knowledge in our decisions. Well, and it just, yeah, I feel like it will just give us a better opportunity when talking in the community, just to have real like facts and data to present versus let me go back and, you know, we're just be more armed with it. If we're speaking and discussing it and hearing more on a regular basis.
I'm coming hot out of a communications training today and, you know, sometimes we get asked questions and it feels like we're like on our heels or in defense. And we talked a lot today about like answering the question, then responding.
And we talked a lot today about like answering the question, then responding, it's answer and add, right? So I'm going to answer the question, I'm going to add our main message and a story or data to support it. And I think that helps, this helps us have more like just-in-time data to respond to, to share our story in a way that steps away, like you said, Amber, from perceptions, but to what is the reality on the, on the ground. The other thing I'm thinking about too is, you know, we've worked really hard to think about what does it mean for governance? So, you know, I think our job in terms of, like Sarah had talked about, like, what's the right medicine is to, you know, be asking Dr. Pruitt, how is his team responding to the data, right? What are you doing based on the trends that you're identifying here? But then from a governance perspective, I'm thinking about how do we more quickly allocate resources to be able to support, you know, what that work is.
I guess I have a clarifying question. What is, so we already get FAST. We always get that, right? Every year, twice a year?
Three times.
Three times. Three times a year. What is different here? What's not already in the data dashboard that we always have access to at any moment in time?
I don't think the, the data dashboard is, is different. I think it's how the, the conversation, I may be leading with the board at, during school board meetings. And so with FAST, I think to the statement that was just made, we often just report out the FAST data, but we don't all, we don't, we haven't intentionally, intentionally communicated how district is responding to FAST data, how schools are responding to FAST data. I think that gives.
We started out a little bit, I think, this year.
Yeah, I think that's an area that where we can improve, improve in, at the district level, but then providing information about what's going on at the, the school level also. I think also we've, we've never dived into, yes, grades are available, but if we, I think don't, if we don't, aren't intentional about the discussion around grades, we can go down several different rabbit holes.
Yes.
If we don't have a collective conversation around what those grades mean and what we're doing about what we're seeing in the classrooms.
So is there going to be a different process in sharing this data with us in terms of when you're going to go down, and we're going to look at grades, or whoever on the board here is going to look at grades? Getting us questions like this ahead of time?
Yes.
Teaching us again how to get into the data that we have access to, telling us the things we need to be focusing on, like giving us more pointed instructions on how to be prepared for the conversation when we get to the meeting that night?
So yes, I think that we touched on this in the retreat with regards to how, how we, how I and the team are developing our decks for the board, being intentional about the questions they were asking, but then also pointing back to how board members might more effectively use the dashboard to access the data that we share versus taking an entire work session or a lot of time teaching at a, at the board meeting versus providing that information ahead of time. Or even in my check-ins that we have on a monthly basis, using, leveraging that to dive a little bit deeper into, into the dashboard, then able to focus in on the conversation and questions during the school board meeting.
Yeah, you know, we might look at it two ways, right? How can, how can we improve the process? How can Dr. Pruitt and his team improve the process? And then what is our responsibility? How are we also changing our behaviors? So yeah, it's definitely, I think symbiotic.
I think a couple of other things that are important, and Dr. Pruitt, you just spoke to this a little bit. It's one thing to have the data and then to sit there and we are not educators, come to our own conclusions about the data. It's more valuable to me to hear from you and your team, what story is this data telling you? What actions are you taking? And then it's the, the follow-up, right? Like with, with surveys and things like that, if people are putting together action plans, well, are the actions that they decided to take improving the data that they were trying to make an impact on? So it's kind of that, like closing the loop of this is what we're going to do now, quarter later, half a year later, whatever the timeframe is, you know, are the actions we're taking impacting the data the way we intended for it to? And then the other thing I think is important with data, and we've talked about this before, I mean, anybody knows this, research can say whatever you want it to say if you want to tell a story. So I think what's important is that there's a balance between telling the positive side of the story and recognizing and acknowledging maybe the not-so-positive part of the data and not skipping over it. It is what it is, right? Like, we're only, we can only get better and make progress if we know the full picture. So I think just making sure that we don't paint too rosy of a picture when we're getting presentations or data from, from you and the team, to make sure that we're acknowledging the places that we really need growth to.
I mean, we're talking a very small percentage of what we want for, you know, for growth. So we have, we really have to dig in there.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of good to celebrate, but there's also.
Well, I think what really helps me make the connections is when we hear the story behind it. Like, when we, when you brought a couple of the building leaders last, last school year to talk about the changes they made within their buildings and the success they had and the struggles they had while doing it, that just helps me personally make that data you provide to us, just makes it more of a connection for me, just to hear the story behind it versus just looking at the numbers.
So literacy and math, very easy, right? Those are hard numbers. We can see what their score was, we can see what their grade is. How are you going to communicate with us? We get the referrals now, we just get them in our weekly updates, it's just a chart, you have to, by law, right? Share that with us.
And suspensions.
Suspension. So how are you going to take those referrals? Because those are things that aren't, that person got an A. Those aren't hard data. There's a whole bunch of information that goes along with what happened with that child. How are you going to report that out and share with us what you're putting in place? Because every situation is different. So what, what do you project that looking like? Or have you got that far yet?
No, so I, I think if you remember back to last year when we were having the technology discussion, and we gave, it was a slide about tips reports. And under tips reports, there were listed, we had, the reason, I didn't memorize this, it's right in front of me. So we had bullying, cyberbullying, threat to harm, weapons. And so I think that we're, what I'm anticipating is that we'll give a similar report, but to Director Burke's point, I think that when we have that data district, district-wide, we can bring in school leaders to talk about what they're doing in their buildings to support. We can talk about systems that we have for the district, but I think that because these, these incidents are occurring in the school building, it's probably more beneficial for all of you to hear the experiences from our school leaders around dealing with bullying or cyberbullying or, you know, weapons, you know, weapons was really low, but I'll stick to bullying. So I think that bringing that story element, because I can tell you, but I think the seven of you probably prefer to hear from our principals.
Okay, yeah. That's great. And you know, I think, going back to Amy's first question, I think we do get a lot of pillar one data. I don't know that we see a lot of pillar two and pillar three data. So I'm looking forward to learning how to consume that from, from you and your team.
Kind of tying into question number two then.
Oh, yeah. So thinking about additional data that might be missing or underutilized. I know one thing that we gave Dr. Pruitt feedback on in his evaluation was really getting at pillar three. We didn't feel like we had a strong data source that told us about if our, if our students felt experienced a safe and welcoming, welcoming, warming environment. So I, to me, that's one area I'm glad to see that that's fleshed out in on here. Are there other data sources that you think are, are missing or underutilized?
I had a question about two, like ACT scores, is that an indicator of anything? Is that a reflection of?
I would say it's more lagging.
ACT?
Yeah.
I think that, so it is lagging.
It would be lagging, yes.
But I don't know, because we don't require all of our students to take the ACT, I think that it would be misleading because the, the students that are choosing to take the ACT, I think is, is, doesn't represent the entire, they, they wouldn't represent the entire graduating class or high, you know, our, our high school students.
Does that get reported to us?
What?
It gets reported.
Right, it still reports a sampling though, just like we have student groups, it'd be, you could look at it as like a separate student group, couldn't, wouldn't you?
Dr. Dittmar, do you have any ballpark idea what percentage of our students take the ACT?
No, but I can look it up. I want to say it's like in the 60% range.
I mean, that could be, that could be reported out, out of 1,000 kids that took it, these were the results, if you can, you can build that in. So someone doesn't think, wow, 90% of Ankeny students got a 36 on their ACT.
Right, it's like same with college enrollment rates, not all of our students go onto that. So it's kind of the same thing, I think of.
Did you have another data set?
Bubble, like those bubble kids, right? I think we're, we had, we talked about this in our retreat, those kids that are on the line that are dipping in and out of proficiency.
Is there a particular data set that you would help you reflect on that?
I can't remember what you called them, Dr. Pruitt, at the retreat, but you called them something.
So I call them students approaching proficiency and students approaching advanced.
Yes.
So it's just not one group of students. And so that would also be probably, if we're looking at ISAS, it would be lagging data, so we would have it at the end of the school year. We haven't talked about how we look at that from the standpoint of FAST, just because FAST is, we don't use FAST in, in that way. But I'm, what I explained and described in May, in June? In June was really referencing, looking at our, our ISAS data.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think to that point, we, now we can identify students that, that weren't proficient, that gained proficiency, and also the students that were proficient that may have dropped back. We can identify those students now and talk about how we're supporting those students this upcoming school year, school year, and then also the students that were proficient and became advanced, or students that were advanced that may have dropped down to proficient. We can talk about support systems for those students.
Thank you. Shelley.
I am curious to see how we've changed our exit surveys to make, if we're going to have more people taking them, are they going to be more informative, we're going to learn a little bit more, or is this going to be a, here I turned in my stuff.
So what are you looking for, Shelley?
I'm just curious if we're going to have more information of, you know, why we left or if we're going to.
Are we going to increase efforts to try and get that information from people that are leaving?
We're going to have some kind of a.
Jody, can you speak to?
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
What was done, what was done last year and what we're looking at doing this year?
So in March, we switched exit surveys over to Culture Amp. And so now every time we receive an resignation, we push out the Culture Amp exit survey to the staff member that's exiting, and then they get multiple reminders. I read every one of them and share them out with Dr. Dittmar or others that it has pertinent information and that may help them in coaching a manager or principal.
Is that, are they compiled in a data set that?
Yep, in Culture Amp.
Seventeen, you know, 80%, said this or answered this, or?
Yep, so they're standard questions.
So it's not just one-offs?
Nope, it's standard questions that's sent to every employee, and it's all captured within our Culture Amp platform.
Okay.
So we're getting a better response than in the past?
Yeah, we were getting a pretty good response prior. The exit surveys was through Qualtrics, and it was built into the resignation form. So when somebody completed that form, that link was there, they clicked on it, they took the survey. I think the questions in Culture Amp are better. I think that that was an enhancement for our district. They're research-based questions. Before it was our thoughts of what was the best question, so we built it ourselves. So I think it's a better tool, and I think the process in reviewing it is much, I would say, easier and more thorough.
And you have exit surveys on the leading data pillar two slide because we're going to be seeing some data from that? So I think that's what Shelley's asking for too.
So my, my vision for sharing exit survey data would be at the, in each semester. So that typically when we see staff either retire or staff that may leave around winter break and then at the end of the school year. So twice a year, we would be able to provide that data to the school board.
So this might lead into that next, next question. Do you, I think it would be helpful for us if we could see the cadence for when we'll be looking at this data. Is that like a timeline you'd be able to, at a high level, be able to share with the board?
Yes.
I know we have like a, in the past, you and Sarah have produced like a, here's when there's work sessions, here's what, what we coming under information only, if that could, something similar that articulates what, when we'll be consuming data at the board table and then maybe, and maybe it's just month by month, right? It doesn't have to be specific board meeting, but, or maybe what's, what you anticipate sharing via, you know, board emails versus what we'll be seeing at the, I think for us having the big picture would be helpful.
And I think to the degree you can keep it general of month or quarter of the year so that you don't feel like you're required to have 17 different informational presentations in one board meeting is awesome. Especially when you're, especially when you are consuming a lot of information. I mean, it's just hard if, if those go on for too long. The one other thing that I forgot I wanted to say too, and I know you and I have talked about this, Dr. Pruitt, but it is also really helpful to see data over time instead of a single point in time. So when we can see it compared to previous years, quarters, testing timeframes, just a lot easier to kind of get the story or be able to understand, is this a, an improvement? Is it good data, is it bad data? It's just helpful to see it, how it compares over time.
I wanted to add, and it's a little bit for question two, or more improved transparency, so kind of both. Sometimes there's a rhetoric out there that like, let's say the office hours that, oh, well, not a lot of us go to it when you talk to some of the teachers and stuff. So I would like to see, I know you said participation rate for the Culture Amp, but I want to make sure I see participation rate for the other talented people section so that we can understand the facts versus the, the perception.
Yeah. What percentage of the population are we hearing from?
Yeah.
It's good context.
I, I think that with the office hours, it wasn't, I think, I have to acknowledge that I'm not going to be able to meet with all the teachers during the course of the school year.
Sure, we understand that as well, yes.
And being, and my desire was, and the reason we had the office hours this past semester was in direct connection to the feedback that we received from the inaugural administration of the Culture Amp. Staff indicated that they wanted to see, more importantly, they wanted to be able to speak with me on, on a more frequent, frequent basis than they had been able to do previously. And so in response to that, the team and I developed the office hours. And I fully acknowledge that the times probably weren't convenient for all teachers, but what I did see some teachers do, they shared information with their PLC, and they had a representative come and speak to me, or a group of teachers would come, principals were providing some coverage for, for teachers. And because we're doing it over the course of the year this year, and then principals know when the office hours are, when I'll be in the building, they'll be able to communicate that at a higher rate, more frequently ahead of time. Hopefully more teachers that want to talk to me and share feedback will be able to do so. I also want to say that the teachers that weren't able to participate this past semester in the office hours, some. in the office hours, some emailed me to let me know that they wanted to, but they weren't able to and then provided written feedback to me. I had teachers this summer to reach out and ask to meet with me. And I met with a teacher this summer who reached out to me, really good conversations. And so I'll make myself available as, as much as possible. But I also think that, you know, one of the discussions I had with the teachers that did meet with me was that because of the size of the district, again, I'm not going to be able to meet with everyone. However, if they leverage their principal in a way and share the feedback with their principal or AP, then they'll, they're able to leverage Dr. Dittmar, our EDs of elementary and secondary to move that communication up the chain of command. And if we do a good job of that, then hopefully staff can begin to see the changes that they're wanting to tell me directly through their principal or AP.
Kind of delved into that last question, what are additional thoughts we have about improving the, Dr. Purt and his team improving transparency and engagement with us during the school year?
I want to go back to question two.
Feel free.
So we haven't talked really at all about lagging data. So, and ISAS, I understand is lagging, but you also get a hard score. So it's something you can easily track over time. And you're guaranteed to get those scores because they take the test in front of you. Graduation rates, I think it would be good, obviously, who graduated on the traditional trajectory? And then who are those students that maybe didn't graduate at the traditional time that they were supposed to, but we got them to graduation?
So you're talking about our five-year, six-year?
Yes. Like, I think that's important data to know. And then maybe that's, this is just a once a year thing or, you know, again, over time, like Stephanie said. And then the last two, I understand are probably hard to get. Do we get enough data in those sets to make it worth reporting out? Because it's reliant on kids who've left responding to an email to let you know.
We actually get college enrollment data.
Yeah.
We do have that.
Okay.
So, sorry, I'm acting like I work here now, but I do know that we get that data.
And I, now that you say that, I think maybe once since I've been up here, we've, we've looked at that or got that. So is that something that maybe the board, I asked the question to the board or administration, do we deem that, we need to elevate that importance of getting that data?
So I would, I would never say that graduation rates aren't important. So I, and we have a high graduation rate.
Correct.
I think, and I think that we can be a lot more intentional about reporting that out. I want to be more intentional around reporting out the students that don't choose not to go to a four-year institution or the ones that enroll in a skilled trade.
Yes.
Or go to the military. I think that that's an area where I would, in addition to the graduation rates, I want to be able to provide board members with a clearer picture around what our student body, our full student body that graduates looks like and how we prepare them to pursue those, you know, post-secondary plans that they develop. So I think yes to-
Especially it's going to be using, you know-
Say it again.
Promoting our innovative hub, which is-
That's right.
You know.
So you're going to kind of elevate the, the frequency, the view of the importance of those?
Yes.
A little bit more to the board?
Yes.
And I'll send you the link, I mean, that's publicly available data, the post-secondary enrollment trends, the data.
Just include that maybe in your, whenever you do a later shift report.
Yep, that's available to us. And I think in looking, especially at like leading, when I look at pillar two and pillar three, like we only give the MRA once a year. So that probably is a little bit more lagging than leading. So I think it's a start for us to-
It's Culture Amp.
Yeah, Culture Amp, right? So-
And I, on the MRA, I'd be interested to know, I know it's, it'd be hard, but, you know, like what happened on that day? You know, because it really is when students are taking this. It is a snapshot of that day, you know, not necessarily of their life, like-
That's true on every test that kids take it on any given day.
Exactly, so it's like, was that day a, you know, what was happening in the world that day? You know, or what was happening here? Was it a snowstorm day or was it, you know?
Yeah.
Just to give, and I know that's hard to do, I mean, it's, but it would give it a better, I don't know.
I think for us.
For us, for me to sit here and say, oh, that makes me feel a little, I don't want to say it makes me feel better, but it does give me a little bit more perspective of when I'm seeing this large amount of grade school kids not feeling positive about their experience and safe at school. This was the day we had a, you know, a fire drill at school, or you know, we had-
I think it's like that'd be so-
You know, something at school happened, you know, that made them feel that way.
I think from our perspective, it's important to keep in mind the richness of getting a lot of data so that we don't have to take individual data sets and contextualize it. I think we can look at all the data together as like a story in itself. So if we're seeing trends across multiple data sources, I think that might be a little bit potentially more fruitful for us to think about than individual context. It doesn't make sense for each, because that could vary between all 18 buildings, you know, on any given day.
Right, right.
Katie, I had one more I was thinking about as we were talking through this. And you could correlate this to, you know, even engagement as like career links, right? How does that correlate into grades and to post-secondary readiness? And Jill, Dr. York gave a really great presentation on that last year. Is that something that's-
That's what it's called.
It's called School Links.
I was like, I think Career Links. Just a smidge off, yes, you're right. But there was good data in there.
There was good data in there.
Related to some of that post-secondary stuff and, and interest. Okay, can we move on to question three? Transparency and engagement? I, me personally, this is a great first step.
Yeah, I don't have any other needs outside of what we've talked about. And I don't feel, just to be clear, like I don't feel like there's a lack of transparency. I think it's more for me personally, understanding the story that the data is telling us, what are we doing about it and is that effective? It's not that I feel like there is a lack of transparency. It's more just understanding how to interpret and, you know, what can we do with the information that we are given, because we are given plenty of information.
I think, I think that trans, for me, the transparency part was more like of what Amy was saying of having a heads up, so we had time to study it, you know, to have-
Sure.
I think to that point, just understanding like expected cadence, right? We're giving you this information so that you can tell the story, so that, you know.
And some of that, I think, is for us to talk about up here, right? The so that is for us.
Yep.
Yep.
I would also say that back part of that question throughout the school year, you know, as people onboard, I think this type of presentation is important for them to understand the difference between the different data that they're going to be presented as we onboard. So I think that's a responsibility we need to take to any new board members.
Anything else around data? All right, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, Dr. Purt.
You got me again, I'm next.
Yep.
I'm going to announce the next item.
I do. Item C, 2526 legislative priorities, sorry.
And so, I wanted to provide a no review, just publicly, the board members are, I know this, but the, the process used for my recommendations for the district's legislative priorities for this upcoming school year. Our cabinet, my cabinet reviewed our strategic plan, our last year's priorities. And we also looked at the legislation that was proposed, all the legislation that was proposed last year. Each cabinet member presented ideas that they thought that would move the strategic plan forward. And then the full cabinet, they did, everyone did that individually. And then as a full cabinet, we then prioritized the, the top four priorities that were, that are included in today's agenda. The first one, and I'm just going to give a high-level overview, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to read to you. But the first one is adequate and timely SSA. I think that, and it's more adequate, over the past 10 years, average SSA has been around 2%. Average CPI has been 3.1%. That is not sustainable if we're going to remain competitive in the metro with regards to, to staff salaries. And I say it's, it's, it's teachers, it's paras, it's custodians, it's nutrition, it's administrators. We need adequate, adequate SSA to keep pace with, with or above inflation. The next priority is full funding for preschool. Currently, preschool is weighted at .5. And we currently have a waitlist of 11 students for our, for our, for our current pre-K system. So I think there are issues with regards to if we had 1.0 funding, that would improve staffing, which, which would mean we could potentially expand, have more classrooms. And our, the team is going to look at how we, what our approach has been with regards to pre-K staffing, staffing over the past few years and figure out, instead of having these ebbs and flows around, being able to, having to hire a staff member in the middle of the school year and then having to release them at the end of the school year, how do we maintain some type of stability? I believe that the 1.0 weighting for pre-K would go a long way. And it also would provide opportunities for us to think about how we expand our pre-K in our school, in our school district. We, and I'm, and I apologize, I can't remember the name of the state grant that we weren't approved for. Dr. Dittmar?
Well, Continuum, Continuum of Care Grant.
We had to apply for the Continuum of Care Grant, which would have allowed us to, to partner with one of our area, we were wanting to partner with Easter Seals. It would have provided assistance with regards to transportation due to our half-day program. Unfortunately, we weren't approved for that grant. But there is a need, I think a growing need in our, our city as more parents are, don't have the ability to pick their children up or may not be able to afford transportation to our local daycares in our city. The next priority that was identified is alternative teaching certification for career and technical courses. I think the more diverse pool that we're able to, to, to access statewide and nationally, it, it allows us to be more competitive with regards to the programs that we're wanting to offer our students. And so we're, so for me, I and the team are speaking to, we have, as an example, we have welders that are, you know, in the industry, doing that work. If we're able to have someone that may be interested in being a teacher of welding, being able to, not necessarily easily, but have it be a smooth transition in order to get them certified, in order to provide that service to our, our students. Again, that would fit right into our, our 10-year strategy with regards to the innovative hub and the geo bond that we're currently pursuing. In addition to, again, and this is in a, an effort to distance ourselves from DMAC. DMAC will continue to be a value partner. However, DMAC is servicing kids that are actually in, that have graduated from high school and that have enrolled in their, their college and are taking their courses. We do have courses that fill up, that our kids aren't able to access. This level of flexibility would allow us to provide that access in our own district if we're able to have a little bit more flexibility with alternative certification. The next priority is special education. And so we, I can't remember if we talked about this at the board table last time, but that is, that is going to be an area of focus for us, especially as we look to get into, get to that 90%. Now, we, I believe that if we more effectively look at how we're supporting our kids that are receiving services through an IEP, we can move the needle a little bit more. And so we need to advocate, I believe we need to advocate for an adjustment to the weighting for our special education programs in our, our state. We currently have operated at a deficit, 2024, we were at 6.8 million, 2023, 5.8 million, 2022, 7, 7 million. And so we would prefer not to run at a deficit. But more importantly, we prefer, we would prefer to have the funds that would allow us to service our students with IEPs in a, in a more effective way. Those are the four areas that I and my team were recommending for the board to consider for our priorities.
I have a question on the special education. Are you also, I think one of the things we've talked about is like differentiation between an academic IEP versus behavioral? And then follow-up question with that, do you propose, like it's a different funding if it's a behavioral versus academic? Like, do you differentiate, you want to differentiate those two as well or just?
So I don't, so I don't think that we need to differentiate because if, if you have X amount of students receiving, that have an IEP, regardless of whether, whether it's behavioral or academic, we're going to need a professional to provide services to those students. So I think that the weighting needs to be applied across the board for any student that has an IEP in, in the district.
Any, any, like just clarifying questions about the four priorities that Dr. Purt's laid out here? Okay, you know, I, when I was thinking about how to facilitate this conversation around legislative priorities, which is really talking through these ISB and UAN here, I, I wish I would have brought my book, but it took me back to the governance core where they talked a little bit about sometimes a board and a superintendent who are really well-aligned with one another and work together, it can sometimes give the appearance that they're rubber-stamping the work when the reality is we've put a ton of time and energy in, in work sessions and retreats and, and closed sessions to get to this point. So I feel like in looking at these four, and I want to speak for the six of you, like this is pretty dead-on with what we want from our strategic planning perspective. So, and I don't mean that to be like we can't talk about the district's priorities. I'm just curious if anybody feels differently about that, I want to give you space for that.
No, I feel like it hits all three pillars.
Yep.
Those do.
And the things that we've talked about that we believe there needs to be a stronger focus on.
I agree.
Okay, so I want to move on then to ISB legislative priorities. We'll vote on this later, but I do want to have the discussion here. Again, I, I want to thank Dr. Purt and Samantha for putting together that survey for us to be able to respond and kind of streamline this data for us to have this conversation. So make sure you tell Samantha we appreciate that. So again, you're going to see that basically our, our priorities for ISB match what the district has said. We need to pick, so number one says tax base or SSA. We need to pick one or the other, so let's kind of start with that conversation.
I'm about to put Eric on the spot. Would you like Eric to, to speak to tax base, property taxes?
Yes.
And SSA? Well, I think all of us know what SSA, but-
Right.
With regards to advocating for-
A stable and growing tax base.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yes, sorry, I'm trying to get my, collect my thoughts here real quick.
I'm putting Eric on the spot.
Wait up there.
And so, sorry, I'm really trying to collect my thoughts here real quick.
No, it's okay, I'm, I'm-
Just like high level, like-
I think when I look, so I'm going to get you off the spot here. When I click on the legislative priorities for ISB, I'm on page 22.
Yeah, I'm on that too.
Where you see tax base. That to me, while important, does not reflect adequate and timely SSA. Like, those would be like bonus points if we could do that, but I think the adequate and timely SSA is more important for us.
Mm-hmm.
Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I wonder if, like, the tax base was making some of us think about, like, the potential property tax impact and some of those types of things.
Yeah, I think it's the SSA.
Exactly what I got from my research too, because I did some Googling.
You have to.
Save you.
Do I have anything you want to add, or go ahead?
No, I was going to go more to the property tax route and what they're looking at doing at the state level from that side of things, but that's completely different than timely and adequate SSA from that side of things.
That affects us.
I would say the biggest priority is the SSA percentage and getting that part down.
Well, and the timeliness of it, because we all know that presented challenges for us.
Correct. That, I mean, having timely would benefit the negotiation side of things and how we proceed with that side of things. Once they can finalize that part of it, then we can really start to look at the property tax base and be like, okay, how do we help advocate for that side?
Okay. So the other one that we need to talk about is number four. So I think these were like equal to one another in terms of votes. So teacher recruitment or public school innovation. So I think teacher recruitment is pretty straightforward. The public school innovation component on here looks to me about.
Aside from page 16 for anybody that wants to. What, page 16?
16.
15, 16?
I think it's looking for more flexibility.
Yeah.
With how we utilize our funds.
Yeah.
Um, so when you think about one or the other, what do you think?
I lean towards teacher recruitment.
Me too.
Teachers.
Yep, because I think that is a little more all-encompassing from, I guess, the bigger issue maybe.
Well, I see it as aligning to the district's.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, priorities.
That as well.
Amy, Amber, do you have any thoughts on that one? Do, I don't, I don't specifically remember. Do we have to have four? Or is, these were just the top four that came out? Sarah, can you, do you know, or Dr. Pruitt?
Those are the, the top four, but I think with the UEN, I think that's the one where you have to go into complete the survey.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So again, Samantha has, we had to rank all of these, one to seven, seven being the largest priority, one being the lowest priority. So these are the averages of our numbers. You know, we don't have to have like a, only a one that's a one and one that's a two and one's a three. We could have multiple that are sevens, right? Okay, all right. Anybody have any concerns about what they see here?
Nope.
I again see reflected here what our, what the district priorities are. That seems pretty fair to me. Okay. All right. I don't want to belabor it. I think our next steps then are thinking about working with Dr. Pruitt and Samantha and thinking about, like we talked about at our Metro Board Workshop in May, like, what is our, I'm going to use the term strategic plan, but how do we want to advocate more thoughtfully?
Yep.
Continue to advocate more thoughtfully. And obviously, Dr. Pruitt and his team have communicated, we'll still have the, okay, this seems to be making its way through the pipeline, wasn't on our radar, here's what, here's what we think we need to do. But I think naming these four priorities, now we can, we've got the what, now we need to get into the how from an advocacy perspective. So I think those are kind of our, our next steps. Would you agree with that, Dr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on legislative priorities related to the district's strategic plan before we move on to annual goals? Okay.
No.
Thank you. All right. Item D is a look at the annual goals. Dr. Pruitt shared these in his Friday board report, required by law to have them. Don't look drastically different. Any questions or comments here? Okay. All right. Item E. I don't know if we had too much for board member committee reports, but anybody having to share?
I do. I had the backpack blitz.
Oh, yeah.
Was Saturday, so I had some information to share.
It was like two days ago or it's coming up?
It was Saturday.
Okay.
It was Saturday from Madison. I, so we had a total number of students served was 745, with the total number of attendees was 715. We ran out of school supplies around 2:00 PM. It was nine, set to be nine to four until supplies ran out, and had to close the event early. We would love to have served even more families and will need additional funds to do so. With the improvements to In Touch and having the ability to create a fundraising page, we believe this will become much simpler. We are also looking forward to creatively, thinking creatively about grants and other funding streams to make this event even more impactful in the future. And warming up for winter, the annual event to provide free winter gear, the coats, hats, gloves, and et cetera. Date has been set for Saturday, October 8th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Prairie Ridge Middle School. This is an amazing event to get kids, students, families ready for back to school. We ran out of the high school, which is sixth through 12th grade, school supplies, just like that. They went through quickly. I, I'm going to give a kudos to my niece. She had a fundraiser last year and raised enough funds. I think she had like six to eight backpacks filled with school supplies. So nice little backpacks too, by the way, stocked full of school supplies that she also gave out. But it was, it's an amazing event. And that we were only able to, you know, give out 700 and some because we ran out was amazing, but it's also disheartening because we're lacking the funds. So one, I hope we do find other ways to raise some funds. I don't know if the Ankeny School Foundation is, if they are qualified to apply for that grant. If, if so, I hope they do so because everything, you know, sent counts. If they have ways that they're putting out on their website to help raise money. So we also, they had another area, services that were available to the community. So balloons, animals were being made. So that was, that was always fun.
Draw.
So, good draw. But it is a good event. And.
Shelley, if you can help, are you a part of it? Is that?
I'm a volunteer.
Is that how you know so much about it?
I am a volunteer. I have volunteered for, I, I don't know how many times I have done this, so.
Yeah, if you can help us know when, ahead of time.
Mark your calendars.
Like if we need to donate or if we missed seeing it on social media.
Yep, yep.
Make sure you tell us about it.
I will, I, yeah. November 8th is, so as you're cleaning out your closets.
She's October and November.
Yeah. November 8th.
Okay.
But if you're cleaning out your closets and all those kids have outgrown their snow coats, or their coats and pants and boots and.
Chili is, did they keep track of how many more came after they ran out?
I, I left at noon. I didn't stay for the whole thing because I had more volunteers coming.
Okay.
And so I said, I'm going to give somebody my spot because they, they left.
All right.
But we tracked schools and we, we take not only Ankeny Schools, but Des Moines School.
Homeschool.
Anyone that comes in.
Okay. So if, if there's a, you might not know this, and I can reach out to Madison, if there's someone listening right now that says, is there something I can do now, between now and the beginning of school?
Yeah.
What that is?
Get on the website and I, you might know, Ken, do you know where to go?
That's a good question.
I'm trying to like, it's. I can.
I don't, I don't, I don't know where directly, but I know Madison and I can, you know, field any questions.
Okay.
One of, one of our goals is to create a, a resource page.
Yeah.
So that information is easily accessible, as well as, as you've mentioned, developing an opportunity to, you know, perhaps if it's permissible, you know, a campaign or a page where that's dedicated for donations, so that we could just provide, you know, more. We don't have an exact number, but I know I was there closing out at the end, and we did have a couple of families come in, but we ran out of supplies and they were, the kids were by grade level. So all we had was preschool. So, you know, Play-Doh and things of that nature wouldn't be appropriate, in my opinion, for, you know, someone as middle school or high school age. However, I did have a father that came with five children, and I said, I can give you backpacks. And he was like, I'll take those. So, you know, I ran in and, and provided what we could and encouraged him to, you know, there were some other events similar going on in the Des Moines area, so they can get those needs met.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give a warning about that. I waited too long to sign up, and the community had already filled up all the volunteer spots, so.
Same here.
Got to get in early.
Yeah.
Mad at myself.
That's good. Yeah.
Any other board member committee reports? Sarah, do you know anything about how the golf outing went? Okay. Yeah, nope, you're okay. All right. So let's move on. Any questions? Item F, contracts and agreements at the building level under $10,000. Any questions there? Just a couple? All right. Let's move on to old business. Item A, can I have a motion to approve and accept the contracts and agreements as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. All right. Let's move on to new business. So item A, can I have a motion to approve adequate and timely state supplemental aid, full funding for preschool, special education funding, and alternative teaching certification for CTE courses at the Ankeny Community, Ankeny Community School District priorities as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, can I have a motion to approve the ISB legislative priorities of SSA, preschool, special education, and teacher recruitment as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, can I have a motion to approve the UEN legislative issues as ranked as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item D. I don't have anything here, Sarah. Can I have a motion to approve the 2526 annual goals?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, can I have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing for the Northview Middle School Boiler Project for August 18th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Ankeny Community School District, 406 Southwest School Street, Ankeny, Iowa, as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have a motion to hold a closed session as authorized by Section 2151A of the Open Meetings Law to review or discuss records which are required or authorized to be kept confidential as recommended.
Second.
Need a roll call vote here.
Director Barthol?
Yes.
Director Romans?
Yes.
Director Tellurene?
Yes.
Director Klaus?
Yes.
Director Gott?
Yes.
Director Northway?
Yes.
And Director Burke?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.